So thanks for joining us for episode number two of the By Many or By Few podcast. First Samuel 14:6 says, "There is no restraint to the Lord to save by many or by few." And as you know, what we try to do on this podcast is to highlight individuals who are stepping out and stepping into sometimes unknown areas and following the call that God has for them. And my hope is that each listener will be themselves encouraged to listen to what God has for them and to follow that voice. And you can subscribe to this channel by clicking on subscribe to follow any, all the information that we've got for North Carolina, South Carolina politics. But today, I'm super excited to be talking to Carrie Alinsky, who is the first person I've talked to who's actually running for Charlotte City Council. And thank you so much for joining us today, Carrie.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
Well, I guess the first thing I need to do is I need to start off by saying congratulations because yesterday was a big day. Yeah, you made it through the primaries.
Yes, it was really, really exciting. I've never been to an election night before. And so it was just really, really a cool experience. It was nice to spend it with my husband and supporters. And it was just kind of fun to watch how things were changing, you know, throughout the night. And but it was really, really exciting. And I was happy to be a part of it and obviously happy to go through.
So there actually was an election party?
Yeah, we, so we actually all met. So, so what a lot of people may not realize is that for us, actually for Charlotte, this is the first time it's ever been done that there is a slate that has been put together to run. And so what we have is we have a slate of four at-large members, myself included. We have a mayoral candidate, and we have District Three, District Two, and District Six, basically all representatives to try to, for the Republican slate, to go forward and, you know, try to run for city council. And so we had a party of basically our entire slate, our entire team and supporters that night. So it was a, it was a party of sorts. We met at Braswell's and, you know, we're just talking and having fun and hanging out.
So do you, how does that process work? I want to get back to the slate a little later on because I'm very interested in this. But how does the process go? Does the Board of Elections give you a call? Or how do you know you're officially moving on?
So there's a couple of different websites that you can actually go through either the Board of Elections, the North Carolina Board of Elections, or Mecklenburg Board of Elections. And I know even a couple of news outlets kind of posted their links. And there was actually some problems on the Mecklenburg site last night. There was times where we're watching, we're like, okay, it's still 5%. It's still 5%. And there was no sort of movement. And so we kept on hitting refresh, refresh, refresh. But, but ultimately, it started working. And so there was a couple of different sites that you could look at. And it's, I wouldn't say real time, but more or less real time, because as the votes were coming in, they, they would update which precincts were completely tallied. And so they did that for the entire North Carolina and then obviously for Mecklenburg for, for the local races too.
There wasn't too much concern about ballot stuffing in the primaries? Good, good. You never know. So I want to take it back a little bit because honestly, up until about a year ago, I didn't even know what the city council did. In fact, I didn't know that Charlotte was run by a city council. Can you give us a little more background on what's at stake here? What is a city council? What does it do? What are you trying to do?
So I'll take the first part of that question. And so basically, city council, what's actually really interesting about city councils that since the, I think it's the 1920s, Charlotte in and of itself has kind of run as a board. And so each member has their own state. And so we have seven districts for city council, actually in the city of Charlotte. So each one gets their representative. And then there's four at-larges, like I mentioned earlier, a mayor, and then a mayor pro tem. And so we all sort of meet collectively, and we make decisions. And so a lot of the, a lot of what you'll kind of hear on my opposing side is that, you know, there's six votes to win. And so you do need that majority to get anything through. But the city council itself, we're in charge of really four main areas, transportation, public safety, you know, so your police, your fire, water utilities, and then housing, sorry, housing. And then obviously, that is a huge one. And so we have a little bit of say in some other things, but those are the four main areas that we're, you know, that we essentially have a part of and make decisions for.
Interesting. So yeah, because I, you know, when you look on, you know, the websites of various council members, you do see those issues popping up. So that's, I guess that's the reason why, because that's sort of jurisdiction. You, you didn't run for your district, though. You ran for at-large. And can you explain what the difference is there? And also why you didn't run for your district?
So, so obviously, the at-large is at-large. So it's the entire city. So actually, the entire city has the opportunity to vote for me as well as also the three other candidates that I'm running for in the Republican Party. And then each district will have their own. And that's, it's honestly easier to look at a map. So the city council has its own districts, the county has its own districts. And so, and they don't necessarily all line up. And so it's easier to look at a map. But I would say I'm actually in District Six. But the reason why I did not run for District Six is because Tarek Bakari, who actually is probably the, the leader and the sort of creator of the slate, is actually the current incumbent and is also running for that seat again. And so when I was approached to run, I was actually asked to run, the at-large position was actually what was sort of asked of me. And so after a lot of prayer and walking around my yard and praying with my husband, you know, we decided to just put our yes on the table and let God kind of move us as far as he wants to move us.
So I find that a lot of people have, they have sort of an interest in running for office. And then sometimes if they move far enough to the point where they could run, then that reality sets in. And you're thinking to yourself, do I really want this? Do I really want, you know, look at, look at politics right now. It feels a little bit nasty out there. Do I really want to, to go forward? Are people going to be picketing outside of my house? Am I going to lose my job over this?
Yeah.
So what, you know, I know that you said you were praying a lot and you were talking to your, your husband about this. But what were those thoughts going through your head while you're, you know, while you're trying to figure out, you know, did you really want this? Or were you sort of not, you know, not sure?
Um, so I'll be really honest and say that I, so I, growing up, never had an interest in politics. I honestly, when people started talking about it, I would go the opposite direction. Because I was just, I was just like, no, I don't really want to deal with that. I can't change anything. Like, I'm good. And probably a lot of it was just the fact that I didn't understand it. And so it wasn't until probably about four or five years ago, really actually with the Brett Kavanaugh case that I got involved more so in, in, in politics. And obviously, that's more nationally. And then that, I kind of just took a real huge nosedive right into the deep and thick of it. And then as I became a mom in the pandemic, city council, the city issues became more of a concern for me. Obviously, public safety being the number one thing for me. And I can talk a little bit more about that later, too, if you want. And so, so for me, it was, it was the sort of evolution of a desire and a wanting to kind of know more, which I think obviously is key. And then when in terms of wanting to run, I'll tell you this, about six weeks prior to someone asking me to run, I was talking to my husband, I think we were doing laundry in our bedroom. And I was just like, you know what? Maybe I just need to run. Maybe I just need to run. And that's how we're going to make changes. Because you know, you hear about a lot of the, the forerunner talkers that are out there. And they're like, get in your local elections, you know, get into the school board, get into wherever you need to, because that's where you can start making changes. And so I kind of flippantly said that out loud to my husband. And also around that time, too, I felt the Lord really calling me to go out and public speak, another thing that I had all my life sort of run away from. And so with these kind of coupled themselves, and then someone asking me a little bit later, we just prayed about it. And I was like, okay, maybe this is, this is what we're needing, we need to do. And God is saying now's the time. And so I didn't have actually a lot of time to think about it. Some people might have taken a year. Mine was actually a two-day turnaround. So some people may not like that. But the thing is, is I was, it wasn't that I wasn't passionate about seeing the change in the city. It just, I didn't have the the knowledge of, hey, I'm gonna run. And so when I, when someone presented that, I made my decision really quick, about 24 hours, actually. And then, and then I said yes. And so here I am. So I'm, I'm doing it and going, and I'm learning a lot. I have a lot to learn. I'm still learning. But I, I love what I'm learning. Some of it's hard because you see a lot of hurt and you, and you're understanding a lot of hurt in the city and where you need to kind of make those changes. But I'm glad that I'm here. And I do think that the Lord has me here for a reason.
It sounds like, well, first of all, key takeaway is more husbands and wives need to be doing laundry and talking. Big things can be accomplished this way. But the second point is, it sounds like there were some things that you, that sort of drove you, issues and ideas that drove you into possibly running based off of occurrences that happened over the last couple of years with COVID and things that, that came to mind during that time. But there also might be some new, new issues that came up as you started to research and understand, you know, what the role of the council is and what the issues of the city are. So maybe you could speak to both of those or just actually just your issues right now. What are the key things that you're looking to accomplish or bring to the city?
So it's, so where I kind of started is, like I said before, being that I became a mom in the pandemic. So I have an 18-month-old right now. And one, the biggest thing is safety. I mean, if people do not feel safe in our city, I don't know really what is more important than that. And so you have to feel safe going to your work. You have to feel safe driving, you know, driving to your kids to school, you know, staying at a bus stop. You know, all these things, just even being in certain neighborhoods. I mean, our crime has exponentially increased over the last several years in all categories in Charlotte. And so I know, and you know this, things do not move fast in government. And so for me to want to see those changes and try to implement and be a part of those changes, I knew I needed to start now. And so so that was kind of the main thing. And, and again, one of the, kind of the stories I like to tell is, you know, I'm actually a medical provider. I'm a physician assistant in my day job. And so I was talking to one of my mom friends. I'm like, hey, is there, let me know if I can help you with anything. She had some older, some older girls and an older son in high school. And she was having to deal with a lot of the things with school. And I just said, hey, let me know how I can pray for you, or if there's anything else I can do. Because I was doing as much as I could in the, in the medical field for my patients. And she, and I said, you know, I know what, my daughter is young. And it's not my time right now to fight in, in the school, Rubrina. But I said, let me know what I can do. And she said something that was so poignant to me. And she said, this is everyone's fight. And so I said, it is. And, and again, that was one of the events that sort of preceded my decision to get on board and actually run. So again, it was just these like nice little timing of events. And I think the Lord does that in so many different ways. He's such a gentleman in sort of allowing us to, you know, he's so patient to get us to that point. And so that was one of those moments. And so, so public safety is my biggest thing. And I would say right after that is I'm labeling it as education. And I want you to kind of stay with me here. I know education is not necessarily the purview of city council. It's actually more of a county issue. But education takes so many different roles. And I think it is one of those things that it's an all hands on deck situation. We need better education with our school systems, not only for the primary and secondary education for, for younger kids. But really where I guess the city purview is here is workforce development and bringing in those skills and having and teaching the adults or young, young adults and teenagers, how it is that they can really thrive in an area or in a job so that they can get to those livable wages. And, you know, therefore, we can also have them attain generational wealth and getting homeownership. And so that kind of ties into the housing issue and, and transportation's tied into that, too, because of getting them to their workplace or to school. And so all of them are interconnected. We can't separate them. But if I had to choose, I would say public safety and then workforce development, you know, and or education.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense. And I guess probably at the city council level, you could probably promote things like trade, education for, you know, youth and, and things like that. But you know, the city council, like how, how do you think that the city council could promote safety? I mean, I know, one, you know, I know a detective in the police department who, who testified before the city council and, and with 100 of his colleagues in the audience. And at three, three minutes in, the city council pulled the plug on his microphone. It's not, it's not, you know, one of our city council members, of course, rose to prominence by protesting the police during some riots that we had. And so it's not, you know, it's not a, it's not a secret that the current city council is not friendly towards the police department. You know, what can be done there as far as, you know, the city council's concerned?
Well, I think one of the major issues that we're seeing, and I've even had a couple of conversations even tonight, and this is not just the CMPD, this is also with FIRE. I think FIRE mentioned that water has this issue. I'm also seeing this with local nonprofits as well, and even a little bit larger ones, is that they do not feel heard by city council. They don't feel heard. They don't feel respected. They don't feel that they have a voice at the table with city council. And so I think the biggest thing that we can, we can bring, regardless of who's in there, is being able to start listening to these people that are, that are coming to us. And so for, for CMPD alone, that is one of their biggest things. I know them and FIRE is just not feeling heard, not feeling respected, and obviously not feeling supported in those areas where there is crime or, you know, the, the community is, there's sort of that disconnect there. And public safety, it's, it's hard. I think for city council, the biggest thing that we need to look at doing is there is not enough police officers for our city right now. I think we have, the number has changed, I think, different on different sources, but 14 or 1500, I mean, that's at best for a city that's near a million people. And we're actually losing about 300 of them to retirement. So 300 or 400 of them. So we are, 1500 is not even enough to begin with. And now we're losing, you know, a huge chunk of that.
Who's in charge of that hiring? I mean, I know that maybe city council has some, some influence on the budget or, or no?
Yeah, there is obviously the influence on the budget with the city council. I don't necessarily know the hierarchy of, like, who's actually chain of command to hire. But the, the problem with it is it's getting the okay, I think, part of it budget-wise. But the, there's not enough people to train. There's very few cadets actually in the training program. So it's, they're, from what I understand and what I've been told, and again, this is just what I've been told is, and but they're from the, from people that, that are working, is they, for so many years, they actually capped out on how many police officers they had. And they're like, oh, yeah, we're good. We're totally staffed. We don't need anymore. But what they didn't really plan for, or they didn't foresee the retirements coming up. And so they didn't plan for the need of having to sort of recruit and train more people. So they were like, yeah, we're at capacity, we're at capacity. But then now we're in the position that we're at where we, no one had the foresight to be able to look ahead and see what was happening in the future to hire those new people. So unfortunately, that's where we're at.
That's good to hear.
I know, I know.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, we need to vote you guys in yesterday. Okay, so that, so, so definitely a focus on safety, public safety. And of course, that has, that has trickle-down effects on all parts of society, not, not, least of which is small business. And the second, the second issue that you, you mentioned was education, sort of in a broader, a broader view of education. Can you speak more to that issue?
Um, yeah. So I mean, in terms of workforce development, you know, I think why I kind of became a little bit more passionate about this and obviously having my young daughter and knowing that education is such a huge deal. When I was very early on, when I was trying to research as much as I could, I came across this document called the Corridors of Opportunity. I don't know if you're familiar with that document or not, but it was set several years ago and by an accounting firm, actually a local here in Charlotte. And what they kind of did is they assessed the entire city. And what they found is that there's, you know, you've heard of like the wedge and the crescent of the city of Charlotte. I don't know if you've.
I have, but I'm not sure where.
Okay, so again, I think a map would lend itself really useful here. But essentially, the wedge is more or less the South Charlotte, and then the, the crescent is more of that, you know, inner city, kind of more north part of Charlotte. You know, there's, there's Betty Ford area, and then there's a little bit more east. And so they found that these areas are actually kind of where our we're sort of the, where people need more or less the most help. And so that's, there's not as much housing, the education's lower, transportation, you know, all these kinds of things that we're seeing. And so that quarters of opportunity, the, the most striking thing about that document to me is in, there's actually four quarters that we have here in Charlotte. And each one, when you look at it, here would be Charlotte, let's say for education, and here would be a corridor. And obviously, that changed variation on the corridor. And here would be Charlotte, and here would be the income. Here would be Charlotte, and, and poverty would be up here. So there was always sort of a disproportion in terms of where Charlotte, the actual whole city of it was versus these select corridors. And so what they found and what I've seen with other documents as well is that education was actually one of the most modifiable, you know, factors that we could do to help, help bridge those gaps. And so that's why I'm really wanting to focus on education. And again, I know this is a CMS sort of county issue. But there are intergovernmental committees that I hope would bridge that communication between the city and the county. And I do think it's an all hands on deck. Like I said before, everyone should be wanting to push education and a better education for all the kids of Charlotte, because they are our future. And, and then with that, too, that other, that document listed out that there was anywhere from a 7% to a 20% of teenagers between the ages of 16 and 19 that weren't in school and they weren't in a job.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a pretty, a pretty large percentage.
Huge percentage. And, and, you know, I don't know the reasons behind why they're not. But I think if it was something to where we could get these teenagers, if they're not in school, get them to, to be more encouraged or more excited about either school or a trade. And then to even, you know, helping adults that they didn't have a trade before, or they're having issues with holding a job or whatever it is, that we can help, you know, refine those skills, give them a trade job to where they can get those livable wages. And I think really, the livable wages is a big thing to get homeownership. Because that's where it is. We have, we don't have enough housing in, in the city of Charlotte. I mean, I know they try to give money towards even more. And I think if the budget is $50 million towards this housing, which is three times what it used to be, at 15 million. And so we, we don't have enough, you know, land, we don't have enough housing right now. But all of those are rentals. And so what we really need to do is change that to where we can help people get to homeownership. And that can help in turn, you know, change that generation or pass down generational wealth and sort of bridge some of those gaps. I mean, that's one way. There's, there's so many different ways to go about this. But I think education is one of those baseline things that we need to try to really put our focus into. At least that's my point of view.
Yeah, no, that makes complete sense. And, you know, anybody who's heard the statistics about the CMS, the Charlotte Mecklenburg School District, which is a huge school district.
Huge.
And the budget is unbelievable. I mean, when I first heard it, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
But the statistics are, are abject failure. There's no other way that you can look at it. And so, you know, and so when the, the percentages, and I don't, I don't have all the statistics, but you know, I'm looking forward to interviewing some school board candidates here upcoming who do. But when you, when you look at that, you say, boy, there's so many people that are falling through the crags, who the system is, is failing them, or they're not, you know, or they're not living up to the standard that, that we need them to live up to. Whatever the reason is, there's a lot of people who are leaving that prime education time period. And they're just not ready for what comes next. And I, you know, I love, I love thinking about, I mean, we have to think about that outside of the traditional education, you know, high school education way, because it's just not working for a lot of people. You know, really interested to hear some of your thoughts as we're running out of time here, but hear some of your thoughts about the slate. And the slate is, you know, as you, as you mentioned, you know, traditionally, Charlotte votes very liberal, has done for many decades now. So much so that conservatives altogether have not run. And I mean, most, most elections is there's up until this point, there has been nobody running against the, the liberal candidates. And so now we have this, this push. And it's still not a candidate for every district, for every seat, right? We still have some districts where there's no, there's nobody to contest whichever Democrat won the primary yesterday. But as you mentioned, for the first time in who knows how long, I mean, maybe you do, but we have a full slate of four, four candidates running for the at-large position. And if you, if you back out, back out a little bit, you've got, if everybody won, enough people to actually flip the city council and mayoral race. How did that, how did you get involved in this? Because you guys have a slick website. I see on the bottom, it's paid for by Tarek Bakari. And he's obviously, you know, a big name here in Charlotte. How did that come to be? How did you, how did you get associated with that? How were you approached about it? Because I love, I love working together and how you guys are doing that.
Yeah, so, so I guess I'll answer the question of how I got into it. And forgive me with, with the, if there was another one that I'm, I'm not kind of picking up on. But so real quick, yeah, there hasn't been an at-large candidate, at least that had won, I think, was 2009 was the last time that had happened. So you're dealing with a majority of Democrats for probably, or I would say liberal side for, gosh, decades. And it wasn't until, I think, the last five or six years with Tark and Ed Driggs being a District Six, District Seven city council members who are on the, the council. So there's a sort of really a nine to two. Actually, you know, in the council for another, another term. And so, yes, so Tark, from, from what Tark tells me, he was trying to recruit people for the last year, a little bit over that. And he kind of had a lot of pushback because he's like, they're like, why would I run? Either I had a success, you know, they had businesses and, and they didn't want to kind of deal with the politics, like you mentioned earlier, some of that negativity that might come in. And then there's also people that are just like, why would I run? I'm not going to lose, you know? And so, so he was really pushing. And I think he had a whole crew that was trying to look for people that would be willing to run. And so for me, And so for me, as you know, we have a friend, friend in, that we share and she asked me and she's like, hey, I think you should run for this. And we've spent so many times and hours, you know, talking about politics and, and knowing that we lined up pretty similarly. So she knew where I stood and how passionate I was about it. And so she asked me, and again, that was sort of that timeframe that I told my story earlier. And that's how I got in it. And so she, she knew one of the other at-large members, Charlie Mulligan. And so I talked with him and all in one morning, I talked with him and Kyle, and then I talked to Tark. And I told Tark all of my hesitations or reservations that I had. And he's, he just was like, no, don't worry about it. This is good. This is good. This is good. And so, and again, we're like, okay, well, we're just going to pray about it and see. And, and I found out later that Tark really didn't think that I was going to do it. But then we called him up a couple of hours later and we're like, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna pursue this. So yeah. And so that's how I got on it. But mine was again, much more later in the game than some of these other guys were.
Interesting. So, so what's next? You've got what? The election's November 8th?
So it's actually July 26th.
July 26th?
Yeah. So this is kind of the big thing that if, if you don't remember anything about me or anything that I've said, you gotta come out July 26th. So they pushed it back for various reasons. Don't think we have time to get into that right now, but the, the mayoral candidate and the city council candidate is July 26th, not November 8th with everyone else. So that's pretty key. The reason why I think slate get, or slate, Tark gets really excited about our slate is because one, we have so many positions being filled. But two, this is a summer election, so it's going to be a low turnout year. And really it's going to be how many, what side is either, you know, more, more mad, more wants to see that change, which I think we know which side that is. And then I think hopefully that there are people who are on the Democrat or, or an unaffiliated side that are really just unhappy. And, and from what we've hear, they've been vocalized, they're vocalizing that to us to say, we're unhappy with how things are going, you know, or we don't get talked to or whatever it is. And they're looking for that change. And so we're hopeful that, you know, people will come out and vote and, and hopefully vote us in.
Oh, so not too much more than two months here, July, yeah, not too, not too long from now. It's a sort of a special action. It's going to be its own, its own thing, separate and apart from November 8th.
Yeah.
Carrie, I want to thank you so much for joining us. This has been really interesting, very interesting conversation. If people want more information about you and your campaign, and particularly to donate, go to www.carryolinsky.com. That's O, Olinsky with an O.
Yes.
And you're one of the few people who's nabbed your name and the, the, the internet domain, which I'm very jealous. Michael Anderson was taken long ago.
Oh, sorry.
Again, that's www.carryolinsky.com. Every $20 bill makes a difference.
Yes.
I'll post that link in the summary details of this video. And you can, again, you can subscribe to buy many or buy few, as we're going to talk to a number of other candidates. And hopefully Carrie again at some point, whether it's before or after she wins this election. Curious to, to see, you know, how this, this progresses. It's just interesting where God's taking you. That, this has been it for the Buy Many or Buy Few podcast. And until next time, I hope you stand for what's right, even if you stand alone. Thanks so much.
Thank you.